Hello Zakary, how are you doing?
Hey, uh, doing well. How are you doing Pierre? Thank you so much for having me on here.
Fantastic. So what are you doing at Hospitable if people are not familiar with you?
I am the head of support, so I lead our support team of customer advocates.
Great. And we will also hear from, and you will share a bit more with us later on some support updates and what's been happening on the customers front. And we'll also be hearing from Ben, a resident villain British accent in the team.
Hello. I feel like I have to live up to that now.
Yeah, be the villain. So yeah, what are you doing? What are you gonna share?
Yeah, hey everyone. Uh, I'm the product engineer lead at Hospitable. I've been here for three and a bit years and I'm excited to talk to you about some of our product updates later today.
Fantastic. And Jen would be here to provide us with an assist in terms of any kind of Q and A. Uh, so we used to use Slido. I don't think that's important anymore. We can simply rely on the chat and that's happening on this town hall. Um, you can, uh, yeah, so Jen, go ahead. Who are you? What are you doing at Hospitable?
Yeah, hi everybody. Uh, I'm on our support team, um, in the States. I'm in Utah. So if you've chatted in in the last year during US hours, chances are you've talked to me and I've, uh, been able to help you. Um, so yeah, today I'll help on chat. Uh, you'll have to pardon me. I'm not fast typing on mobile, so I'm gonna do my best. I don't know how you guys do this, but I will be there to help answer any questions if you have them on chat as well.
Fantastic. Thank you so much and for being here, um, and bringing a little bit of diversity otherwise. So, uh, yeah, I wanted to share, so obviously with the usual, so some company and some, uh, and some high level updates. Um, so obviously one of the issue that is top of mind for me in particular right now is really the situation of our iOS application. Uh, so iOS, if you have not been following this, uh, story, uh, has been removed from sale by Apple on February 18th. That is now two months ago. And basically Apple is requesting that we implement in-app purchases for iOS applications. So you must be familiar with that if you have been, uh, purchasing a subscription or some kind of payments on iOS already. Um, the thing is, there is no software in the space that's implementing iOS in our purchases because, uh, we are all relying on an exception, uh, which is called the free standalone app, uh, which is basically Apple, uh, accepting that if we are a cloud-based solution and we offer an application on mobile, that's for example, an email client, then basically you don't need to charge, uh, with through in-app purchases on the mobile application. Um, and the other parts, uh, it's particularly, it's a problem really on technical on the, on the part of iOS is the fact that we, uh, the, the, the pricing is not compatible with the features of in-app purchases. Um, and that means for example, that implementing in-app purchases, uh, would mean degrading the customer experience. Uh, so we would have to force cancelling a subscription and then we manually request, um, a user to re-activate the subscription uh, before a charge, which is definitely not something that any of us really want to, want to accomplish. So we will see, I ring a lot from you, uh, about the fact that we are trying to get the application and you see that it's not available in your country. I can assure you, we would really love to have that application in your country and especially, you know, when it's the United States. Um, and so on our side, there is really no doubt, uh, we want to consider any avenue to get our application back online as quickly as possible for our new customers. And as well for existing customers, uh, we're trying now to onboard new team members or have new clients and they want to offer them the ability to access their business on the go. Um, we've been a bit patient. Now this, this, we're gonna stop. Uh, we have appealed to the app, to the Apple review board, uh, to basically escalate that matter to them. Uh, and it's, we're really hopeful that it should be, you know, for our case is really a textbook example of that exemption that we're using. Uh, we have provided an abundance of information to satisfy Apple's requirements. Um, and especially, you know, even if we wanted to implement in-app purchases, we've never heard from Apple about how to technically go around that. Uh, short of changing our pricing, which sorry to say, but that's a bit, it's a bit too much. Sorry for that. Um, so we are gonna keep you updated obviously on the status of iOS application. And we are gonna be working first and foremost, uh, to make sure it's gonna be back to, uh, available everywhere in the world as it should be. Ideally, as it used to be back in February, uh, if not, uh, within our purchase options that we don't, still don't know how to implement in detail. Um, on the business side, just some high level items. One thing, I, so I'm always a bit reluctant on sharing purely internal items, but, um, just one thing that I believe can be, uh, can be shared is really the fact that, uh, we are working on migrating all our US contractors, actually, like Jen and Zakary currently are contractors of a European, uh, company and, um, that basically is no longer gonna be the case. Uh, so they're gonna be proper employees. Uh, that's been a bit of a project, uh, for us. Uh, but if there is one reason that you should care about it is that really we expect that it would help us recruit faster talented people in the US, uh, which is basically where we have the overwhelming majority of our customers, that 87% of the customers that are based in the US. Uh, so that's where we should be easier for us to recruit people. Uh, another observation, um, from, uh, what we are seeing in particular on the, so on the, on the business side of things is that we are now seeing a higher number of former customers that cancelled the subscription, uh, just after COVID. Uh, so in 2019, that I'm now reactivating the subscriptions, uh, which seems like is really, that's the end of the long-term rentals, long-term tenants, uh, and now the listings are gonna be back on Airbnb or Verbo, uh, for short-term rentals, uh, which is a good industry signal and that's why I wanted to share that with you. Uh, there, we have also seen that property management companies that now have a greater capacity and a greater, greater capacity to invest into that tooling. At the same time, have a, uh, better capacity to invest, but as well, you know, greater need to automate as they basically have done rebuilding their portfolio, uh, and now we need to prepare for the next season. So, uh, all of that basically is going to seem to a pretty good situation growth-wise. Uh, revenue has been growing 8.9% in the past 30 days and we expect that to actually keep, uh, keep growing, uh, at a pretty high velocity. Um, customers, the customers count growing also very nicely at 7% uh, per, in the last 30 days. And in particular, the two segments that we're paying the most attention to, uh, which are the, where the property owners that are listing on Airbnb and Verbo with up to two properties, uh, it's growing 12% per month for us. So that's what we call the professionals. Uh, and the situation is about the same for the starting host, uh, property owners up to two properties that are listing on Airbnb alone, which so far has been growing, uh, is on the path to grow 9% uh, per month as well. Quick notes to finish on fundraising, uh, we have 41 investors that have invested together $490,000 into Hospitable. 490, I want to say 500. Um, so that's about $40,000 more, uh, than the last town hall two weeks ago. And we are basically a little bit more than $80,000 signed already. Uh, so we are hoping to pass the $500,000 very soon. Why does it, why, why should you care? What does it matter? All of that is basically allows to recruit in the US and it's gonna be invested into our sales and marketing, but also into our product teams. Uh, so from everything that you've been, we've been hearing about on those channels, that's really, um, investing more. And I think the capacity to invest into direct as a product, I think capacity to expand the scope of our product. So we've been talking for a long time about marketplace of service providers that require people. Uh, and that's gonna be something that's gonna be financed, financed by this fundraising. And the other part of it is really keep on developing our existing application. One of the things that you've been talking about a lot is really relation with metrics. Uh, those investments are the things that are, uh, particularly, you know, allow us to accelerate those developments. And yeah, and so for that, we, uh, I'm done on the kind of high level updates and we can hear Zakary on some support updates and what's been happening on the, on customer support and customers fronts. Thank you very much. Good luck Zakary.
Thank you Pierre. Um, uh, as I mentioned before, I am the head of support here at Hospitable. Um, I'm actually based out of Tampa, Florida. Um, so we have any, uh, fellow Floridians here, um, you know, shout out to Tampa and shout out to Disney. Um, to be honest, uh, you know, I've been here for four months now and, um, it's been, uh, quite exciting working here, uh, you know, for many reasons, but I think one thing that really stands out that makes it almost difficult to work here sometimes in a good way is that, uh, I get to see all of these amazing vacation rentals. And for some reason, I feel like I get a lot of tickets from people or conversations with people, um, that are in Florida. And it just makes me wanna pack up my family and, and go on a trip. Um, so if you have submitted a conversation or, or, or chatted with us in the last four months, you, you, you and I may have crossed paths. Um, and if not, then, uh, you may have seen an email, uh, that I sent out last week, uh, for an incident that we had. Um, VRBO updated some things on their end, uh, and I actually miscalculated the impact that it had, uh, on everybody. If you didn't receive the, the communication, don't worry about it. Uh, you can disregard what I'm gonna say next. Um, but if you have, um, and if there's any confusion on that, uh, on that VRBO update I sent out, uh, I wanted to let you know that everything will continue to work as normal. Um, if you use a PMS with VRBO, uh, then, um, they'll continue to manage your pricing for you. Um, and if you do not have a PMS for VRBO, then it's business as usual. Again, this came to be, uh, because we noticed that VRBO is updating some things on their end. Uh, and we thought maybe, uh, we needed to send out, uh, an update to let you know about that. Um, with that being said, uh, let's see here. Um, some other exciting updates happening on the support front, uh, is that we are making a huge recruitment effort uh, to increase our coverage in the later hours of the US. Um, so this will be like Pacific, uh, time zone. Um, had a really stellar turnout for the amount of applicants that we had. Uh, there were, at one point there was over 300 applicants, um, and we recruit on AngelCo, so a lot, a lot of folks, um, reaching out to us on there. Um, some of them actually, uh, even, you know, current customers, so, uh, really appreciate all the interest there. We've whittled that down to two who are now in the final interview phase, uh, and so we're really excited. Uh, perhaps even on the next town hall, you'll get to meet a, uh, new friendly face, digitized face. So I'm very excited to, to share that with you all. Um, in addition to that, uh, the team that we have now, uh, I wanted to share some pretty sweet stats, uh, because it has been a very busy year. Uh, every time Pierre hops on here, he talks about how much growth we're having and, and internally, of course, we, we share that with each other as well. Um, and, uh, with that comes a lot more conversations with, uh, customers, potential customers, uh, people getting started. Um, you know, the updates that we're putting out for smart locks and, and all sorts of, uh, uh, fun stuff. And so, um, I wanted to share a few stats, uh, from, uh, just from like, uh, this year in 2022, how are we doing this year? Uh, and so one of the things that stuck out to me is we've had actually over 8,000 conversations with, uh, our customers here, um, at Hospitable, which is super exciting. That's a lot of people that we've talked to. Uh, and, and a lot of people that we've talked to, uh, a few times to help them get to where they wanna be. Uh, I did the math and if you had buses that fit 80 people, that'd be over 100 busloads of people. Uh, so that is just quite the magnificent number. Uh, and so really kudos to the team for, um, for showing up and, and helping all these folks. Uh, with that being said, uh, you know, handling that many conversations is impressive. Uh, but what's even more impressive in my opinion is that we've managed to keep our median response time under 30 minutes. Um, in addition to that, we're also feeling Zoom calls. Uh, so if you're not aware, um, just to make sure everybody knows on, on this call here. I, I, I see we have some new phases on, on Clubhouse. Um, you can actually go to the help center and schedule a Zoom call with, uh, with any of our support reps. We have a few time zones available. The, the spots kind of book up pretty quick. Um, so I recommend if you wanna get some time with us on there, uh, definitely, um, you know, book some time, uh, with us on there on the little widget and app that pops up for you. In addition, this year we added two new members, uh, of our team for the European shifts. Uh, and as I mentioned before, we're gonna be, uh, adding another person to the, um, US shift. So really expanding our, um, our availability, uh, and our capabilities in supporting the customers that we're bringing on. Uh, so even though we're growing fast, uh, customer-wise, we're also growing fast as a team. Uh, so that is just really, yeah, really exciting to kind of see all that coming together and see the, the side-by-side growth. Um, so that way we can continue to support and deliver on the, uh, high level of service that we're known for. Uh, last two updates that I have, um, one thing that, uh, we did, uh, kind of earlier in the year is, um, we set up our chat widget, so it would actually bring you through a flow and kind of suggest some articles, uh, before allowing you to open up a chat directly. Um, this was not done, uh, you know, this was not done something that, not done lightly. Uh, and it is something that, you know, I, I, I think I can speak for the whole, uh, support team that we would rather go back to opening up chats. Uh, you know, kind of like all the way, uh, but of course we wanna be careful to make sure that we can, uh, deliver on that high level of service. So what we've done recently, just yesterday, is now if you want to chat with us directly, um, if you head over to the help section, the widget will allow you to open up a, a direct chat with us, um, without having to, you know, kind of walk you through the article suggestions and that flow there. Um, still recommend you check out the articles. We, we have a lot of great minds, um, and we're continually adding to it every single week. Uh, but I wanted to let you know that if you did wanna, you know, uh, send us a chat, uh, that is the easiest way to do so now. Um, so again, just head to your help page, uh, the support page section, open up that widget and, uh, send us a message. We'd love to, uh, hear from you. Last but not least, um, got some very exciting news. Uh, we review weekly, uh, on the support team, um, internally, uh, just as a company, the net promoter score, uh, you might hear us refer to that as NPS. Um, if you're not familiar with what that is, uh, it is a survey that pops up periodically for our customers, uh, and asks them how likely they are to recommend, um, our service, uh, to other folks. Um, and so, uh, what's been pretty sweet is in the last seven days, uh, this has been at 74, uh, with all the responses that we're getting. Uh, and anything above 70 is considered world-class. Um, so I just wanna give a shout out and, and, and kind of like a, uh, an appreciation, uh, you know, for our customers submitting that feedback. Um, and not only submitting the feedback, uh, you know, for that survey that pops up, but also, uh, I, I just wanna share my appreciation for the customers at large. You know, I've, I've worked at a, you know, a, a few different companies and, and I've never seen a customer base that's so engaged with the product, um, and willing to kind of work with support to help us resolve your issues and, and get you to where you wanna be. Um, which is, I mean, just mind-blowing for me from a standpoint of like, you know, uh, and, and really a dream as a, you know, leader of support is, is having customers that are engaged with the product and tell us when things are going awry because we wanna fix these for you. Uh, and so with the amazing, you know, customer base that we have and then the amazing customer support team that we have that are, that are constantly advocating for you internally. Um, really the, the sky's the limit and I'm super excited for kind of what's next. And speaking of what's next, um, I think that leads us over to, uh, Ben, if you don't mind, uh, giving us, uh, the lowdown on the product side of things.
Hey, hey, yeah, thank you so much, sir. Uh, so you're not actually, you're not alone over there in, uh, in Florida, Zach. I'm just checking, keeping an eye on the chat and we've got Chris and Sheri, Sheri over there in, uh, in Florida as well.
Nice.
So, hey, hey, everybody from Florida. As you can probably tell, I'm not from Florida. I'm, uh, coming from sunny England at, at the moment. Uh, yeah, so my name's Ben. I'm the, uh, product engineering lead at Hospitable. And, um, yeah, just wanted to spend a little bit of time to walk you through what's happening with the product. Um, so the first thing, uh, well, the headlines really is direct, direct and direct and a little something extra, which, uh, I'll come on to in the end. Um, but yeah, first of all, I wanna say thank you, uh, to echo kind of what Zach was saying about feedback and, and, uh, customers who are engaged and kind of work with us. Um, one of the first things that I wanna talk about that we shipped to production since the last town hall, uh, is some tweaks to direct websites. Um, and this is pretty much directly based on some feedback that we received. So Andy, I think you're around. Thank you so much for that. Um, so the changes we've made in this area, uh, is we've removed some of the flashy animations. Uh, when I say flashy, I don't mean flashy good, I mean flashy bad. Uh, so yeah, thanks so much for spotting that, Andy. They were pretty jarring. They're now gone. Uh, no more jarring animations on the, on the homepage. Uh, we've also done some other things as well. So we tweaked the image gallery, uh, on your direct site to put more emphasis on those kind of first few photos. Um, there was a particularly interesting example where I think, uh, one of the high, one of the images being highlighted was like the fifth image and it was of somebody's bathroom. Uh, not exactly the look we were going for. So that image gallery is being tweaked now. It's gonna put much more emphasis on your, your cover images, the ones that are kind of closer to the front. Um, and continuing with that theme as well, just kind of general tidy-ups on, on direct sites as well. So we had a navigation bar. You've probably seen it on your site. It had one option, home. Um, eventually there's probably gonna be more options and then we'll need a navigation bar. Right now it doesn't do a lot. Um, so we've taken that navigation bar away, uh, and as you've probably seen on a bunch of other websites, uh, we've made the logo in the top left of your site clickable. So if you ever need to return home, you can, you can do that by clicking on that, uh, that logo. Uh, on the other side of things, when you're actually configuring and setting up your direct sites, we found kind of a bunch of small issues, fixes, uh, some areas you might have experienced when you're updating the gallery or trying to verify your custom domain settings. If anybody's tried to add a custom domain to your, to your direct site. Um, so yeah, things are kind of purring away a little bit more in, in that area now. Um, we're much more confident with, uh, with how those sites are looking. There's obviously a bunch more we wanna do in that area. Um, but yeah, we, we think, we set aside about half a day for this, I think, and, uh, we were able to tackle some of that kind of low-hanging fruit, as I would call it, to, uh, to, to kind of improve that experience where we can. Um, and then continuing with the theme of direct, um, what's the team been working on? You know what I'm gonna say? And I'm gonna say payment processing for direct. Um, so we've spent the last couple of weeks working on, uh, payment processing both for direct basic plans and direct premium plans. Uh, and this is a choice you'll be able to make once we launch direct. Uh, we're gonna give you a few different paths that you can choose from as to, uh, how much kind of help and assistance and automation and things that you would like, uh, and convenience from your direct site. Um, so for direct basic plans, we've, we've done a lot of the groundwork now to enable you to accept payments, uh, via Stripe, via your own Stripe account. Uh, and for direct premium, we've laid a lot of the groundwork as well for you to receive payments directly into your chosen bank accounts. So there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes, uh, with payment processing. Um, and how that's gonna work as well, we've, we've started to put together the booking flow, uh, for that. Obviously the booking flow at the moment is very, very simple. It's one step. Your potential guest enters some information, they click the button, it shows up in your inbox. There's no kind of payment associated with it at the moment. Um, but yeah, we, we're kind of hashing out what that flow is gonna look like when payment processing is part of it. Um, and I think we've mentioned this on previous town halls at the moment, but the kind of flow is gonna be, uh, that as your guest goes through and kind of gives us their, uh, primary guest details and their payment details, um, what we're gonna do is we're gonna authorize the funds. Uh, and that effectively means that when the guest completes that booking flow, um, we're, we're holding the funds on your behalf, but we haven't actually charged the guest. It's still down to you as a host to kind of review that booking and determine if this is, this is a, a guest that you want to stay on your property. Uh, and with premium, we're gonna have some options to help you out there. We're gonna have, uh, integration with auto-host so that we can kind of, um, automate some of that as well and give you some options to, uh, to, to kind of look at some of those indicators and, and the sort of health of the guest and, and determine if that's one that you're happy to, to, uh, to auto-accept. Um, but yeah, the key thing here is that we're not gonna be charging anybody until you are absolutely happy that yes, this is a reservation for me. Uh, go ahead and then kind of charge this guest. Um, so less refunds, uh, less, less kind of rejections from that point of view. And in terms of releasing this, um, I think we mentioned, uh, I'm sorry, just something in the chat there. Uh, yes, so, um, payment processing, we, we love to release things early. We love to release things in public. We love to build in public. Obviously with payment processing, that's a little bit trickier. Um, we're talking about taking money from people. We're talking about kind of a whole kind of booking and payment processing flow. Um, so all the stuff I'm talking about here, you can't really see, touch or play with at the moment. Um, that pains us. We wanna get it in front of you as quickly as we can. We're working hard to do that. Um, I'm gonna stand here and say now, we are literally a few weeks away. I won't be any more specific than that. Uh, but we're a few weeks away from having bits of this that you can touch and play with and start to set up in advance of, of, uh, direct properly launching. Um, so we wanna start giving you the ability to set up your payment methods, uh, your payout methods so that you can kind of determine, you know, for properties one, two and three, I want them to go to this bank account. For properties four and five, maybe I want, I want them to go to this one. Uh, so we are gonna get some of that in front of you way ahead of the, of the launch of direct. Okay, and final thing, uh, that's cooking at the moment, uh, my good friend and colleague Toby is working hard on ICAL imports. Um, so we're working to enable, um, you to add ICAL imports to your properties, uh, so that we can pull in reservations from even more platforms, uh, and support guest communications and operations messaging via email. Kind of similar to where, what we're doing with, uh, with manual bookings and, uh, booking.com at the moment. Um, we need your help with this. Um, call, call for help, cry for help. Um, we're trying to gather as many, as much information as we can around people that are using different systems. Um, we, we need from you ICAL links, we need, uh, emails, uh, from different PMSs, uh, that you might connect to. Specifically the ones that we're, we're really interested in, in getting, if you can help us out here, uh, is any ICAL links or emails that you might be receiving from owners, uh, from Logify, from Hostfully, uh, or IGMS. So if that's you, if you're accepting bookings or if you have ICAL links from those channels, please, 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 we would love to hear from you. Uh, you can send them across directly to Toby. Toby's our engineer that's kind of working on this. His email address, toby@hospitable.com. Uh, that's toby@hospitable.com. He would be super happy to hear from you. We all would be super happy to hear from you. Uh, we're super excited to, uh, support some additional channels by, uh, ICAL.
Woo-hoo. Ben, what's happening in the background? The voice, I'm fighting.
Ah, I thought my noise, I thought my noise cancelling was on 10.
Eh, no, no, no.
Clearly not. No, I'm in, I'm in my office.
The official mic inspector, but that's what I'm saying.
I'm in my office, but I can hear a little bit of something as well.
Yeah.
Uh, so we got three, three kids here and, uh, one of their friends is staying. So, um, yeah.
Oh.
Even, even being in an office sometimes can't, uh, can't fully interact even there.
You know, uh...
They sound like they're having a great time.
Yeah, here I thought they were just excited about all the product updates you're delivering.
Yay!
I mean, I, I think, uh, even Clubhouse is excited. I've got some sort of balloon next to my profile, which I don't know what it is, but thanks, Clubhouse.
I think it's, uh, an anniversary or something like that.
You're right. It's one, one year anniversary. There we go.
Okay, so just to recap, uh, on some product updates, what's, what's important, uh, we did bring some changes to the sites, uh, which were requested by Andy, who will be on stage in a, in a few moments, uh, with us. And on, uh, yeah, the work is still going and I think honestly had a very nice base on payment processing. Uh, we kind of set a deadline internally for the 18th of April and basically we've been able to hold into that deadline for the things that we wanted to do by that deadline. So I think that's, that's really going great and kudos really to the engineering team in particular. And ICAL imports is really something that I want to highlight. Um, and it's really connected with this kind of Verbo issue that Zakary was talking about. You may use, uh, Hospitable with another property management software for, to, to address, you know, uh, some things that are very difficult for us and are very challenging for us to execute at this point in time. Those are things like owner statement. Those are things that, uh, if you have had in the past, like on Logify, a direct booking website, and you want to basically bring that information back to, uh, to Hospitable, the best way for us to do so is really with those ICAL imports. Um, so we really, uh, are ready to dedicate more resources on that. Uh, the point is really, yeah, if you are using one of those, uh, property management software, like Onarise, like Logify and like Hostfully, uh, IGMS maybe that's, uh, if there is still an available app, I'm not sure. Um, but we want to basically get those ICAL fees. That's very important to us. Uh, we, if you have also, and Toby has done a great work of reaching out with, uh, to customers in the past days, but really if you have put it, uh, or something on our, on our, on our website, feedback@hospitable.com, uh, for integrating with channels like GoDown, like TripAdvisor, like Spanish Finders, which has been a really popular channel request recently. Um, so, um, Toby has reached out to you and asked you for basically what is the format of those ICALS. Uh, and I know some of you in that room have already contributed, so thank you very much, uh, for that. So send your email, uh, to toby@hospitable.com and, uh, that's a great way to help yourself out so that you can have all the messaging automations coming from Hospitable, whatever software, whatever channel, uh, you're using on the point. So we're gonna start the Q and A. Thank you very much for your patience. I hope that basically that first segment was interesting to you. Uh, if not honestly, I want to hear, uh, about how you, how you feel about it. Uh, we're gonna start now the Q and A. So, uh, just reminding some rules, obviously all those calls are recorded and we're gonna broadcast those later on YouTube. I think there is a bit of a lag, uh, or delay on the, our marketing team to upload those videos to our YouTube channel. Um, uh, so yeah, if you want, you can just raise your hand. Uh, Jen will also be there to assist you on the chat, uh, for any question you may have. And on that note, uh, thank you. You can raise your hand and I'm gonna invite Andy on stage, uh, who was with us obviously on the last town hall. How are you doing, Andy?
I'm doing well Pierre. How are y'all doing?
Doing great. How is our website doing? How are our website doing, Sunday?
Uh, it's doing much better. Uh, I love that y'all fixed the, uh, custom domain bug. Uh, that was a little bit annoying. And then the, um, the flashing thing, um, I, it's, it's a much, much better experience on that. And so, um, really appreciate y'all's work and, and hearing the feedback last week and taking action on it pretty immediately. That was a really, really great to see. So thank y'all very much for that.
Yeah, and you can thank Ben for that in particular. We've been taking your feedback to art. Um, and has been implementing and dedicating a bit of time out of direct, of the payment processing piece to do that. Where are you, Andy, right now?
Uh, I'm, I'm in a coffee shop in Seattle.
Coffee shop in Seattle. That's where you wait. So that's early in the morning for you. Coffee shop in Seattle. That's where you wait. So that's early in the morning for you.
Yes, yeah, nine AM for me, but that's actually like normal working time for me.
Okay. Is there anything else we can help you with, Andy, since you have the attention of Ben again?
Um I mean, there's just a couple like, you know, design issues on there. There's still um like the the he- the title pages, the titles uh in the headers, they, you know, don't work at all. Um it still says like, you know, one guest can stay in the house always. There's, it doesn't give you these sorts of things. So there's still some some fit and finish and polish to do, but overall, I'm really glad to see that the the site is up and working and stuff.
Okay, and just to me to, Ben, go ahead, sorry.
I was just gonna say, hey, Andy, yeah, sorry, I missed you coming up on stage at the start there. Someone uh someone tried to call me. Um so yeah, it's it's the other way around. Honestly, I just wanna say thank you so much for your feedback and um yeah, we've we've still got a lot we wanna do with the direct site. Um definitely, but um yeah, glad we were able to tackle those ones.
Yeah, it's definitely much appreciated. So uh keep up the great work there. Uh really appreciate y'all's work on all this.
Thank you. Thank you, Andy, for your feedback. Thank you for getting on stage again. Um and yeah, just to repeat, uh the the website templates that you're seeing now, they're basically just a beta version. We'll be, we are very much looking forward to improving them uh adding more choices and giving you more options to personalize and basically make it to your taste. Uh for now, what we strongly believe in and we would like to get focus is on our ability to process payments. We believe that the best looking website is there to make you money and the best way to get you money is basically to pay you. Uh and that's why we believe strongly that the the best priority at this point in time uh for the state of our product is really to keep on spending more time on payment processing. And just because I know that that's something that is of curiosity to everyone. Um the internal, public-ish uh kind of uh deadline that we are going towards is really the end of May. I've communicated that, I believe, in previous town halls. Uh so that's when we are really contemplating a launch of uh all those features for you. Um so that includes the payment processing, the ability to have your guests, so for direct premium in particular, uh your ability to don't, you don't, you won't need to set up a Stripe account will be facilitating the payments for you. Um you will have uh out of the box uh guest rating solution um that you will need to to pay or care, take care of. Uh you will be having all the information about your future direct guest. And in partnership with Super Og, we'll also be providing you with a five million dollar insurance uh for uh for all your guests stay staying with you that I looked through your direct booking website. So you have an experience that's closer to that of an ETA, uh but at really uh a much cheaper rate uh that I can absolutely tell you. So uh thank you, Andy, for your feedback. Uh we look forward to basically releasing payment processing, fixing a few bugs in there and there absolutely whenever we can. Um and then we'll be looking forward to getting back to the direct booking websites and all the functionalities and features that can really, that we hear a lot about and that will be helping you create an amazing uh booking experience online, whatever channel you would like. Thank you very much, Andy. Anyone else would like to be, sorry, Andy, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting you. You wanted to get something, go ahead.
I was just gonna say thank y'all very much.
You're very welcome, Andy.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you, Andy.
Um okay, do we have anyone else? It seems like actually we're running short of questions. Uh as if anyone would feel like raising their hands, I think you have a button on the bottom of the right. Uh but I actually don't know because I'm basically having a little bit of a different interface than yours. Uh yes, we have Devin, uh that is interested in getting on stage. Uh so I'm inviting her. Thank you, Andy. Uh we'll move you back to the audience and you can ask us later if you have a question. Hello, Devin, how are you doing? Devin, am I saying that right? Hope so. Devin, I think you're muted, so I think you need to unmute yourself. Or maybe someone.
Ah, that's better.
That's better.
That's better, yes. Thank you so much. And yes, you are saying it right. It is Devin. So I have a question about this Schleg lock integration that I'm currently using. I've noticed that if there's an alteration to the reservation, it's not updating the Schleg lock dates and times.
It's true. That's what I tell you. That's that's a behavior that would be absolutely expected. Um just to check, I'm sure you did, but did you escalate that over to to support team, to Jen and Zachary already?
I have not done that yet, just because I just, I don't know, I guess kinda, I just thought it was like the way that it was gonna be, but.
No, no, no.
Okay.
No, no, so I I want to clarify on that. And thank you for giving me an opportunity to talk a bit about smart locks. But yeah, we spent a lot of efforts uh in the past few weeks on really ensuring that everything is working as expected. What I believe, Devin, and I I don't, I I think the engineering team needs always to look into that. Uh that is in particular Christian with your life today um is really to kind of look into those, look into what happened. It may not be because it's an alteration. It may be because there's something else going on in your iteration of your setup with your locks. And we've been working very closely uh with Schleg in particular to understand um the the different issues that may that may have happened at the different line. Uh it's a it's a very complex piece of uh engineering. Uh once we send a request to create a code on everything that's happening behind the scenes and we are basically on a more uh future-proof platform, which means it has some experimental uh impacts on it, which is a new platform that Schleg will be working for their future software partners. Uh and there is basically a bit of a gray area at times uh whenever there's a problem. So Devin, I just want you to, if you can, uh send us any information that we may need. So really the confirmation code of a guest uh so that we can look into what happened and and really come back to you with a with a compelling answer on what's uh what's been happening in your 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 Schlegon code that we have presented.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
You are very welcome, David, Devin.
And Devin, just to let you know, um I'm gonna send you an email, so you can just reply to that email and we'll take care of you.
That's nice. That's what happens now when you have the support there. You're gonna stay here. The careful like, you're gonna stay. Okay, I'm gonna invite a few more people. I'm gonna invite, I believe, Michael Dingmans? I don't know how to say it. I've, that's something that I've been wondering myself for a few years. Michael.
Yes, hello, how are you?
Very nice to be meeting you. I'm Pierre Camille. How long have you, have we been in touch?
Um yeah, I've I've been a.
Five years?
Uh yes, seventeen, yeah, nineteen, twenty seventeen, was it? Yeah. It's a brilliant service and I love it. I have.
My, my, sorry, I'm just wondering, before you explain to me your problem, I just want to share a little bit of context with everyone else. Michael has been a very early, I doctor and a very early customer of Smart B and B uh who has been challenging us uh the early days on basically location of the customer, location of the properties. Because where are you hosting and where are you based, Michael?
Um I'm in London and but my property is in Holland, in the Netherlands.
Exactly. And so that is not something to anticipate and there were a lot of issues in the early days about it in particular. That's what I remember because I was the one fixing those problems then. So, Michael.
Yeah, you used to do the, you used to do the support back then.
Yes. Luckily, we have more competent people now. That are less likely to be under defensive. Uh and that's literally have a have a have a wealth of skills that I would not need to use.
Anyway.
For me, that's fixing the bug. Michael.
Nothing but praise, but now I have an issue. And you put your clever minds to it. I've just joined booking.com, a reservation system. And um uh basically, um in the summer months, I have a minimum of seven days, which is supposed to start and stop on a Saturday. But uh that doesn't seem to go through to booking.com. And then when people have made random bookings like on a Thursday to a Wednesday, then I have three trapped nights. I try to change the um the reservation to minimum three nights as opposed to minimum seven. But it won't change it on booking.com and I've been in touch. Uh I think we've up to about thirty-five emails now with the support team and trying to get it to work. Disconnecting, reconnecting, trying this, trying that, but it just doesn't seem to work. And I was wondering if this is something you could have a look at or if it's just just me and my system, uh the way I put it together, I I don't know. But basically, um once it's joined up to Smart B and B, you can't change anything on the booking.com site. So you can't go and manually change uh check-in dates or 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 periods that they can stay at all. And we've tried it with the changing the the days on on uh the Smart B and B um calendar, on Airbnb calendar and so on and so on to see if it would push it through, but it doesn't seem to do anything. So that is my con- my contribution to your supporting today.
Yes, uh and and just to tell you, I'm basically, I'm opening the the intercom and it's actually one of the first messages that I'm seeing is in is with you. So I know you're being taken care of. I think you you have, you have had a call with Alyssa. I think you're also in touch with Lisa.
Yeah.
Um so I I think, I think basically every, everyone contributed to that particular issue. Um so yes, indeed, there is a limited amount of features that we are currently supporting with booking.com. And I think if you're trying to, you want to add availability rules that will, for example, give you a check-in on a Saturday and a checkout on a Saturday. That is not something that we currently support. So for you to set that up, um I I honestly, that's the point where I'm I kinda want to go silent and I want to defer to the judgment of of Zachary and Jen, uh because I they probably have a lot more experience than myself in interacting with this type of this type of issues. Uh but I do believe that basically the best, the only way to configure them is definitely to go onto booking.com and then basically reconnecting over your booking.com listing, reviewing the properties over to hospitable. Um I think a challenge, and I think that basically I see just one from nine minutes ago and I see that we have uh we have been able to connect your with your property. I think earlier that was a problem with the type of pricing that we were supporting. Um what I can say that once the 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 your booking.com property is connected over to hospitable, I would fully expect that you'll be able to set a minimum number of nights uh on your available dates on the calendar and that's literally our responsibility and that's something that's absolutely expected. The caveat is really making sure that you have that standard pricing, which is the pricing that we support. Um and would love to do more, um but that's that's really is the the kind of biggest blocker on our side.
Okay, yeah, I I can deal with because I it's it's a new property I have and I can deal with them coming in in any day so long as they stay for a couple of uh, you know, for that period. But then you get these trapped nights and you have to adjust it because you suddenly got a Thursday to a Saturday. And um we, as you say, we've just been able to reconnect again after uh trying a couple of times. But up to now, it still won't change those nights. So that's that's basically uh we'll have a look at it again tomorrow or something, but that's where we stuck.
Um yeah, for now, so you have just one property on booking, right?
It's just the one, yeah, yeah. I just thought I'd try booking.com on that one. And actually, I have to say, um I'm also on Airbnb with that particular property. I've had absolutely no reservations from that, whereas I, you know, get pretty much everything from Airbnb and my other properties. And I've got like my ten or fifteen uh from booking.com, so I'm quite impressed with with that. And uh even even with that, we got a plot on and and get it going. It seems to work quite well. It's just this little technical issue that we're trying to resolve.
Yeah, yeah, I I see, I I see that. I think there there are indeed a few gaps in the calendar and what's there, there may be something. I I believe that really the support team got you got you covered and that's.
Yeah, yeah, no, I.
Is the best, the best way forward.
I'd I'd bring it up on this as well because I thought maybe somebody else might have an issue as well. And uh but uh other than that, as I I sing your praises, so.
What, sorry, one other thing that I'm looking at on your account right now, and it's probably not something I should be doing, um is you, so the thing is that you have misaligned availability windows. So your Airbnb accounts and for that listing and your booking.com uh are basically misaligned uh misaligned availability minimum night stays. So you have a minimum night stay of seven nights for your booking.com listing, but you have three nights, I believe, uh for certain weeks uh for certain dates on Airbnb.
Yeah.
And you you're having an availability sync turn on, which is fine, but you also have minimum night stay sync turn on. So what it means is that we are then gonna take the minimum night stays of what's called your lead listing, which is your lead channel.
Yeah.
Uh and we're gonna push them over to ensure a consistent uh setting across the board.
Right.
And I do believe that your lead listing is your Airbnb and.
Yes.
I won. It's like I've been playing this game for a little bit. So the, yeah, it's your Airbnb listing that is setting your availabilities and a minimum night stays and pushing them over to booking.com properties. So what is gonna need to happen is either you're gonna need to change your, on your properties, you're gonna need to change the lead listing on your listing fourteen base uh to uh the booking.com listing, which may come with its own set of drawbacks, or disable minimum night stay sync, which will come with another one. Uh the thing is, you need to think, and that's a decision that belongs to you, uh really on what you want to achieve. If you want to have different pricing, different availabilities, different different availabilities, you really should not. But different midnight stays uh across, you know, between booking.com and Airbnb, you're gonna need to basically adjust the configuration accordingly. Right now, we are configured to push everything that's happened, that happens on your Airbnb listing over to the booking.com listing.
Yeah, well, that's what we, with your support team. Cause I hadn't had that set up. I didn't know anything about it. So uh we we made the Airbnb um the lead, so every, all the.
Which which has advantages, which has advantages, for example, when you're setting your booking.com listing so that we can push the prices from your Airbnb to booking.com. Uh and something like that. Now you are in a different phase.
So now, but we say we have that and I do change the 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 trapped days and to minimum nights and so on. But in Airbnb, uh on the Airbnb website and but it still doesn't uh at the moment uh push that through to booking.com.
Okay, at this point, I'm really out of bullets.
Yeah, yeah, so no, that's fine. But I just, I just thought I'd mention it and and we are working through it and and they've been very helpful. And I said, we've got about thirty emails going backwards and forwards, so it's all uh worked beautifully so far. But we just seem to be stuck on this this thing and I know we'll work it through. But anyway, I just thought I'd say hello and give you another challenge.
And thank you for saying, for saying hi. And that's really appreciated. I love to hear from you, Michael.
Okay, take care.
Thank you so much. Um we, uh I think Ken next. Thank you, Ken, for your patience. How are you doing, Ken?
Good, how are you guys? Thanks uh for making the product. It's great. Uh I have a question about the smart lock integration. I had an interesting issue this week where it, uh I had the smart lock set to use the guest's last four number and apparently it could not set the last four number, so it reversed the guest's last four number and set it as that. Um my question is, I'm okay with that. If uh the smart code for the lock code that you put in the check-in instructions would use the actual code that got set um and still try to set the guest's last four phone number.
Um so you need to change, I believe that's a setup uh on your on your messaging. Um I think it's something we may need to improve, I'm thinking. But you uh you will need to use the smart lock code, short code, instead of the guest's phone last four.
Right.
So that that that, yeah?
If I set the, to use the smart lock code, it'll actually say the code is used, but I can still have Schleg use, try to use the guest's last four by default, correct?
Yes, absolutely. So that's that's indeed is a new piece of logic that we have on Schleg and code devices. Uh so that when there is an error on Schleg devices for no, and we we don't understand the reason why those codes get rejected, which is really on Schleg's side. But we are trying then to create another code and basically, so I'm glad that it works for you. So we were able to create the code instead of one, two, three, four, four, three, two, one. Uh but indeed, that means you need to update your 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 short, your short code. With the smart lock code, that is always gonna be the accepted code uh that will be used uh on your, that is, sorry. When you use the smart lock code, uh short code on your messaging, we will always communicate uh the code that has actually been provisioned, that that has actually been created on your device. Um and so that means we have a little bit more of a wiggle room uh to create a code that works, which we believe is really the first priority. Uh and indeed, if that's the the four last or the N last digits of the phone number do not work, then we basically can try either the opposite one, uh so the opposite order, or try a free random one, uh which is the the last fallback.
Perfect. Yeah, that's exactly how I was hoping it would work, so.
Yeah. Okay, that's that answers your question, Ken?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Perfect. Well, have a fantastic rest of your day then. And uh we having then Asawi, I'm not sure. That's a, how are you doing? You have a question about custom codes?
Yes, I do. Um so this is my first time using Clubhouse. I'm attending.
We can hear you, you're having a, you have a beautiful voice. Thank you very much for joining. Everything is fine.
Okay. Okay, so um I'm using the custom short codes and um I'm trying to conditionalize off of a number of nights. Um but it's detecting um too short, it's detecting it as um non-meachly. But it's detecting too short, it's detecting it as non mutually exclusive short codes. When it, when it's, when it's, when it is, when it can't fall within the same time period. So like, let's say, I created one short code for greater than four nights. And then I created another one for three nights and less. And so it's detecting that, it's the same, it's, it's falling within the same set of events. So it, so it's forcing me to create two short codes for something that ordinarily I should be able to just create one short code for. Does that make sense?
Okay, so just to refer to the question, you would like to, yeah, you would like to have alternative shortcuts. Alternative custom codes that do not overlap with each other depending on a particular condition. Zachary, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, that is, that is, that is interesting. I'm, I'm following along on your example here. And do, do you have these custom codes hooked up to your, like, created right now?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And so, just making sure here, so.
I can't name them the same thing. I have to name one different than the other because I'm conditionalizing off of number of nights. And it seems to work with other conditions. Like if I don't select the same properties, then it's, then I can use the same short code. But the reason why this is a problem is it's creating additional spaces because now I have, it's detecting it as two different short codes. So when I put it in the regular template, then it's seeing it, you know.
I see. Okay, so, so you, you want, if I'm understanding this correctly, you want like one, one custom code to cover these two conditions. And so that way it'll either do, you know, condition A, which is, you know, less than three days. And then condition B, which is, you know, four days or greater.
Uh, yes, that's correct.
In the same spot on the message.
For my other stuff and it, and it works. It's just number of nights that, that doesn't work.
Really? Okay, interesting, because I do, I, I have seen a lot of hosts use the setup that, that you were talking about. Which is, you know, having the same custom code name, but for like different properties, so that way it like kind of populates with different information. So in this case, I am a bit surprised that it does not allow you to set the same code. So I'm just hopping into your account and taking a look and be a nosy, if that's okay.
No, that's fine.
Just to check. So yeah, okay, we can, we can probably not take it offline, but basically continue the conversation there. But just to make sure I understand, the problem is really that there is, there are spaces that are, that are too mu, too many. And you would like to remove those extra spaces, correct?
No, I would like it to use the same custom code so that I don't have to create another one with a different name. Because they're, yeah, because they're mutually exclusive events.
Yeah, I.
That makes sense.
I do get that. So, yeah, no, so that, that is indeed not, that, that is indeed not possible. So that, that's not a bug. That's something that we basically validate against. We, you can have custom codes with the same name, but they need to be scoped to different properties. What we don't take into account is really those kind of conditions. Because we still want to have those custom codes to be descriptive of what is expected for you to do. What you, so you can use both, but what is expected from, from us anyway to achieve that functionality is to have both custom code names next to each other. And on our side, what's expected is really that there is a cleanup of the message, that we basically remove any extra line breaks or spaces that the, not, not spaces at the beginning of a line, for example. But you, and you can use them really back to back. So you can have a custom code potato and banana in exactly the same line. And if one condition is true for potato, we'll replace potato. If the condition is true for banana, we do that. And that's actually gonna help you write one bundle paragraph. But if the condition for potato is not correct, you can just add banana and we are only really how it, how it works. So I think that's, that's really tied to this, that may be tied to the specific of your message there. I know it's really good in our security.
No, 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 that's fine. And if y'all remove the extra space, it would be fine as well.
I think we do that automatically.
Whoever's looking at my account right now, it's the one that says instructions parking.
Okay.
Gotcha. Yeah, what I'll do is I'll, I'll send you a message and that way we can open up a live chat together and I can help you get this set up.
Alrighty, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sweet.
Oh my God, I'm sorry, I'm still coughing. I'm still a bit sick. And yes, so thank you very much for all those questions. I think we're gonna be, Ben is gonna have to escape, to go back to his family duties. We don't have any more questions, I believe, on chat, but we had, we had an interesting comment. Yes, from Sean, will Ical sync be instant or delayed by thirty minutes, hours, et cetera? And I just wanted to finish, actually, I think that's, that's, because that's amazing to, to have this question. We actually, so that's one of the things that actually Toby did a bit of research on, across, across different products. Toby actually basically almost worked on that on his own quietly and told us really late that, yeah, you know what? I want to tackle this thing. And he basically looked at other products and they were ending that and realized that, yeah, the reality is that it's always gonna be delayed sometimes by a few hours. And that actually means you kind of accept to degrade the experience of the user to a relatively, you know, understood level. What the idea that we are having is to always tie the Ical with an email. So the idea is that when you are gonna be receiving an email on that address, we are gonna refresh your Ical feed. So that's why it's always, the ask that, what Toby is asking is really two things. It's your Ical feed so that we can understand the format, we can, you know, grab as much detail about the guest and about the reservation as we can. But that's also understanding what is the format of a confirmation email, so that we can really trigger and look for the dates immediately. As soon as you get the booking confirmation. So that means no lag in recognizing those reservations. And no lag in, for example, creating a thread with the guest and sending that booking confirmation message directly from on our side. So without, without any kind of delay. There are also, that's, that's actually a nice way to circumvent or solve a lot of technical limitations that are around Ical's. You may be familiar with the fact that, you know, Ical's do not refresh. Sorry, do not refresh as often as you would like them to be. And so the fact that we have the email that's gonna be sent faster is maybe a way for us to kind of not only trigger a refresh. But also to, to kind of pre-populate some information about the reservation while waiting for the Ical to show and confirm more reservation. So the idea is that we want to make that instance probably even faster than the Ical, depending on how that's being implemented. And that's why we want to work with that couple, like really having those, those Ical feeds and that reservation booking confirmation email. But that's gonna be also for booking alterations or booking cancellations, email that you may receive from your PMS for direct bookings and from your OTAs. Such as, for example, a trip advisory email telling you that you are receiving a new guest. So yeah, that's, that's for us, like particularly exciting to have. And yeah, Brett, we're gonna start the, the, the panel right now, because we positively want to keep it around, around the hour. But Brett, I'm sure that now we have Zach on the call, we can send you emails. And thank you for staying so late, Brett, so late. The best way to learn as much as you can around the product is really gonna be to check on our support page. So in the product where you have an entire area for, you know, articles and questions, but there is also a part that is really getting started. Where we have a lot of those videos for, for training in, in particular. You also have a Facebook group, which is called Hospitable Host, that you can join. You just asked a few, two questions really to ensure that you are actually gonna be a, a, a user of our application. And that should get us, you know, to, importantly, to exchange with other hosts that are using your product. And that, for example, is one of the things we discovered when we, when Zach sent a new message about the verbal incident that happened last week. And basically allow us to kind of correct that. So that's also another avenue for receiving help. And also asking for feedback about messaging setup. That, that can be quite helpful. So that's a fantastic way to end that call. Thank you very much for your attendance. Zachary, you have a few emails to send. Are you reaching out to them or to people already?
I, I only need to reach out to Brett. Everybody else has gotten an email in their inbox, so. I'm slinging emails out left and right. Be prepared. Your inbox is not safe.
That's a nature of religion. I don't know. Thank you, thank you, Ben. Thank you for staying with us. Thank you, Jen, for your help on, on the chat. And thank you, everyone, for attending that call. The next one, let me just check my calendar, is as always gonna be in two weeks. So we're looking at really the eleventh of June. And here, the configuration will be a bit different, is that I will not be here. I will be having a baby moon with the love of my life. And will probably be at that time at a restaurant and basically doing some kind of baby preparation for what's coming next. So I hope I will not be thinking about you too much, but please don't take it personally. It's really just a bit of a special time in my life. Thank you very much and see you next time.